Good evening. Welcome to the Sarpy County Joint Public Hearing. It's Thursday, September 18th at 6:32 PM. A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the sign-in table at the entrance. Please silence all cell phones and stand for the pledge of allegiance. My name is Amber Hotelling. Chief Deputy, I'm the Sarpy County Clerk, Registry of Deeds Office, and I will be the facilitator for the joint public hearing. Property tax requests, presentations, or public comment are the only items on tonight's agenda. This meeting is being livestreamed. The purpose of this hearing is to require that a designated representative of each political subdivision shall give a brief presentation on the intent to increase its property tax request by more than the allowable growth percentage and the effect of such request on their budget. Remember, this is not a meeting to protest for property tax. You were already given that opportunity in June. Tonight, we will hear from the City of Bellevue, Bellevue Public Schools, City of La Vista, Retina Public Schools, Papillion La Vista Public Schools, and Sarpy County. Each representative will be giving up to 10 minutes, and we ask each representative to introduce themselves to the audience. Everyone attending this joint public hearing, including elected officials, must sign in the attendance sign-in sheet located at the entrance of the room. The county clerk is required by statute to prepare a report, which includes the number of individuals who attended the joint public hearing. So it's important that you sign it. After all presentations are complete, we will take a 10-minute intermission, and then we will call for public comments. If you haven't already, you sign in to speak at the entrance table, which is separate from the sign-in table. That way, we don't miss anybody. You will be called up to the microphone, and we ask that you state your name and address. Everyone wishing to speak tonight will be allotted two minutes to make their public comments. No individual questions will be answered. We encourage anyone with questions, contact your specific representative after the hearing. If there are any disruptions from the audience during the meeting, you may be asked to leave. We thank you for participating respectfully. Let me introduce our first representative, Mayor Rusty Hyde, from the City of Bellevue.
Rusty Hyde, Bellevue, Maryland. This is my seventh year. I'll be finishing up in December as the mayor, and it's my third time up here, fourth time up here. So I want to start out by going over just some of the numbers that we're required to report some of these. I'm giving you a couple extras, but I want to make sure we're on the wrong slide. And so certified property valuations fiscal year 2025, tax year 2024. The total value of all the assessed value in the City of Bellevue was $6,943,649. Fiscal year end of 2026, tax year 2025, the total valuation of all property was $6,468,288,999. Property value assessments are up 6.1% year-over-year over last year. So the property request fiscal year end 2025-24, property tax request, this is last year, $37,175,268. This year fiscal year end 2026, 2025 property tax request is $39,456,562. And that's a rate of 0.61, the mill levy, which has been the same for years per $100 assessed value. So these are the postcards that you received in the mail from the different governing bodies. And if your valuation was higher, the property tax would be proportionally higher. If your valuation went down, you would have a lower property tax. If your valuation did not change, you would have a lower total property tax because it did come down just a small amount. The general fund expenditures, where does your money go? So this is where the City of Bellevue spends their money. I'm going to go over the budget for the 2025-26. That's the right column, which is the current year. The left column is the last year's personnel were $52,874,882. So 36% of the budget. Departmental expenditures, $15,917,799. All other expenditures, $4,559,104. So the, yeah, those are the operational expenses of $73,351,785. The capital expenditures, those are the items for roads and projects around the city, your parks, all that. Total of $147,846,378. But you can kind of see the public works, $55,770,576. Fire, $18,182,611. Police, $24,844,572. General government is $16,851,65. Bellevue Bay Water Park this year was bonds, $32,243,454. Now, those are not, the water park was not paid. Some people get that confused, but that's a self-funded on sales tax, occupation tax, and the money we get back from the state on the good life district. As you can kind of see, the total amount of, you know, our public might have them on this. So resources to fund the budget. So this is where that money comes from that pays for those items we just went over. And again, I'll go to the 2025 second column there, 2025-26 budget. Property taxes, $35,260,783 come from property tax. So you can kind of see the public safety, I think, was in the 39, almost $40 million. So property taxes does not even cover public safety. Just to kind of give you an idea how much money it takes to run us. Sales taxes, $21,558,800. Occupation business taxes, $1,534. State aid payments, we get $8,865,000. Fees and permits from building permits, so forth, $7,780,211. Brands, another cost sharing, $7,232,449. Other revenues, $65,169,887. A lot of that's going to be your bonds that are issued. Transfers, $445,000. So total operational revenue, $147,846,378. Which is down, actually down 8% over last year. So 24% comes from property taxes, 15% from sales tax, 6% from state aid, 5% fees, permits, licenses, 44% from bond proceeds, and 6% from all other. So the public safety tax statement reporting, so you can kind of see the interall expenses related to public safety defined under section 13320, county attorney and public defender expenses from budget, $39,220,721. Interall general fund expenses from budget plus public safety expenses outside the general fund that are funded by property tax is $31,47,780. Public safety total for tax statement calculation for parcels, 26.3%. Make sure I gave you state required information real quick. So the tax rate, which would levy the same dollar amount of property taxes as last year, but we kept the budget the same as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property would be a mill levy of 0.5747 per $100 of assessed value. The City of Bellevue's current total operating budget of $197,94,581, decreasing 0.7% over last year. So there's a full report on our website, Bellevue.net, and it is on there. So you can look up, if you want to get down into the weeds, there's every column in there, and you can find out how much we spent on vehicle or whatever you want. All your contacts are here. Glad to see you. I think I saw three of our council members come out. So thank you for being out here to talk with people after the meeting. And that is all I have. Thank you.
And next, we have Director of Fiscal Affairs, Susan Brooks, with Bellevue Public Schools.
Hey, good evening. I'm Susan Brooks, Director of Fiscal Affairs for Bellevue Public Schools. The Bellevue Public Schools has a proposed budget for the 25-26 school year, which totals $137,265,112 in the general fund and $5,820,784 in the bond fund. The total across both funds is $143,8896. This is a 2.5% increase from the 24-25 total across both funds. In Bellevue Public Schools, expected funding comes primarily through two sources, state aid and property tax receipts. This is about 77% of our total funding. Any increases we receive in the property tax receipts or other funding reduces the amount of state aid received the following year. In the last eight years, state aid to Bellevue Public Schools has increased only three times. After two of these three of these increases, excuse me, state aid was reduced by a larger percentage than the prior year's increase. Overall, state aid has decreased in the district by 6.34% since 2008. For 25-26, Bellevue Public Schools has a proposed property tax request, $54,395,220 in the general fund and $5,873,280 in the bond fund for a total proposed tax request of $60,268,500. This is an increase of 5.9% overall. As I mentioned before, our aid from the state of Nebraska was reduced again this year. The property tax rate levying the same amount of property taxes as last year would be $1.726 per $100 of tax assessed value. Bellevue Public Schools' proposed property tax levy of $1.14.54 per 100 of assessed value for 25-26 is down 1.46 cents from 24-25. Our levy is decreasing. Based on the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of the Bellevue Public Schools will increase by 3% overall. Our budget-specific info is as follows. A 3% increase in the general fund budget, which is $3,740,83, and a 3% decrease in the bond fund, which is a reduction of $179,632. If you have questions, please call or email Bellevue Public School. Thank you.
Next, we have Mayor Doug Kending for City of La Vista.
Good evening. I'm Doug Kending from the City of La Vista. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Every one of you in the audience, at least I want to sit and be able to listen to you. La Vista holds multiple meetings that are open to the public when we go through our budget workshops, do the three ratings, when we set what our CIP is going to be for the year, which then is plugged into the budget. So another public meeting is welcome. I don't have a PowerPoint. I apologize for that. Any of the information that I'm going to give you, I will either stay afterwards tonight. I will provide you my office number. I will provide you my cell number if you want anything more detailed after we hear from all of you. The fiscal year 2025-26 budget was carefully construed to meet the needs of our growing community and maintain a balanced budget. It continues an approach balancing the strains associated with the growth and aging infrastructure, with the desire to grow and expand quality-of-life amenities to meet citizens' expectations and attract visitors. The proposed spending plan maintains a stable and predictable municipal tax rate. Operating expenses of the city that are supported with property tax continue to grow with the increased demand of maintaining that aging infrastructure along with increased service demands related to improvements and growth in the city center and southward area. As a result of these increasing demand, the 2025-26 property tax request will be set at $13,562,756. The total assessed value of property differs from last year's total assessed value by 4.17%. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property tax as this last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property would be 0.5169 per 100 of assessed value. The City of La Vista poses a property tax request will cause our tax rate to be 0.54 per 100 of assessed value. Based on the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of the City of La Vista will increase from last year's budget by 9.6%. I want to just finish by saying, this is my personal opinion. We have a tax problem in the state of Nebraska. It's not his property tax. It's our income tax. It's our state incentive. It's our lack of state aid that we receive. I will tell you, I'm honored and I'm humbled that I'm in my 20th year, and we have asked to be at the table to help solve this problem. It does nothing for you guys today. But I will tell you that I will continue to fight for that. In the City of La Vista, we've tried to diversify our tax base with our hotel occupation tax, with our sales tax, things to take away from the burden of property tax. So I am very excited to hear what you have to say tonight, and I will stick around afterwards if anyone wants to talk to me. And obviously, on our city website, you can get the number to City Hall, and I will be more than happy to make that call back to you. So thank you very much.
Next, we have Director of Business and Operations, Russ Olson, with Retina Public Schools.
Good evening. I'm Russ Olson. I'm the Executive Director of Business and Operations for Retina Public Schools. Tonight will be the eighth informational meeting that we have allowed our community to participate and learn more about the 25-26 budget. In the 25-26 school year, the school district's revenue will be primarily funded by a combination of state and local sources. The largest portion will be local property to the next at 43%. State sources of revenue are 30.5% and consists of state aid, special education reimbursements, and state apportionment. The remaining 26.5% of the other sources will be such as motor vehicle taxes, OPPD distribution sales tax, and other reimbursements. Due to rapid enrollment, Retina Public Schools has opened seven new schools in the last eight years, including four schools in the last five years. With the state's funding formula, Retina Public Schools has lost nearly $7 million in state aid since the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year. Based on a valuation of $6,200,101,800, Retina Public Schools has proposed an itemized tax request as follows. $59,530,654 to the general fund, $500,000 to the special building fund, $23,306,247 to the bond fund, with a total tax request of $83,336,901. Retina Public Schools has a property valuation of $6.2, excuse me, $6,200,101,800. This represents an 11.22% increase compared to the 2024-2025 evaluation. Additionally, the property valuation represents a 5.8 increase of real or new growth. The adjusted tax rate for Retina Public Schools for the 2025-2026 school year is $1.213587 for $100 of assessed property value. The increase in the district's tax request is primarily driven by significant growth. This includes the increase in student enrollment, additional staffing due to the opening of Giles Creek Middle School, the second year of Cedar Hollow Elementary, and an increase in salaries and benefits for staff through a new negotiated agreement. The proposed tax levy for the 2025-2026 school year is $1.34121 for $100 of assessed valuation. And this represents a decrease of .0056 cents from the previous year's levy and a .0042% change in the total levy request from the previous year. The proposed levy for the general fund would be .960156, which is a 2% decrease. This fund covers the district's primary operating expenses. The building fund has a proposed levy of .008064 at 10% decrease. This fund is used for the construction and maintenance of school facilities. And the bond fund has a proposed levy of .375901, which is a 3% increase. This fund is used to pay off voter-approved bonds for construction projects. Based on the proposed budget, the total operating budget for Retina Public Schools for the 2025-2026 school year will see an overall decrease of 8%, bringing the total funds to $163,604,912. The general fund is projected to increase to 10.68% for a total of $104,841,414. Special building fund will have a significant decrease of 42% to $35,454,513. The bond fund is expected to increase by 3% to $23,328,985. And for more details about Retina Public Schools' property tax request, please reach out to Russ Olson, Executive Director of Business and Operations, with the contact information that is on the screen. Thank you for attending.
Next, we have Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Brett Richard.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brett Richards, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services for Papillion La Vista Community Schools. Tonight, we'll talk a little bit about what we're here with our revenue considerations for 25-26. We did receive a loss of about $550,000 in Title I allotment this year. That's over half of our Title I funds coming into 25-26. We have an estimated increase of 4% of total package labor increases. That includes a 5.4% increase in health insurance. Labor personnel packages are around 85% of the district's entire spending. We did add a new SRO sergeant position that we share with the City of Papillion costs with. We have alternative school costs. We have alternative school costs coming out of COVID. There are tier three that are alternative placements for kids that have really escalated. Curriculum materials and technology costs inflation increases. Proposed general fund budget increase of two point six percent this year. Our budget authority will go from one hundred and sixty-five million five hundred fifty thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars to one hundred and sixty-nine million eight hundred sixteen thousand and three hundred seventy-four dollars. Our revenues and expenditures are expected to be right around one hundred and fifty-four million for this year within that budget. We had a preliminary evaluation increase of seven point six percent. At Papillion, we have a lot of new commercial properties, new residential development, and continued rising by using our communities. We're also adding two bus routes in the school year with the one hundred and fourteenth street riding for about seventy-five thousand dollars each. A new elementary school will open ninety-ninth and Lincoln Road at the end of this fiscal year. So our fiscal year is September first through August thirty-first, so we'll have two months of that school in operation costs and curriculum salaries and equipment. The bond does pay for furniture and some equipment within that bond project. We did open a new young adult transition program building this year, just west of Liberty Middle School. Have new operation costs associated with that. Transportation custodian maintenance cost increases with our additional square footage. We do have some good news, our state aid has finally hit rock bottom, so we can't go down any further than it is. We be actually are getting a two point seven five percent increase this year compared to a twenty-four, twenty-five loss of seven point six million dollars, which equates to about nine cents of property taxes, so we had to deal with that last year. We request property taxes for three different funds in Papillion La Vista Schools. There's our general fund, which was our main fund, our bond fund, which pays principal and interest back, and then our special building fund, which covers any facility projects that we have going, including the May twenty, May two thousand twenty-three bond approval of one hundred and thirty million from our voters. Our amount will be finalized when the district moves through the tax hearing process, which is tonight is included in that, but the administration is recommending a four point two percent overall tax revenue increase from twenty-four, twenty-five. So you can kind of see that here, our general fund is set property tax request at ninety-two million two hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And that's just over a ninety cent levy. Our bond fund, we're asking for seventeen million six hundred fifty thousand five hundred and five dollars, which is about seventeen and a half cents there. And then our special building fund, one point six million basically property tax requests for any emergencies with any boilers, chillers, those types of things, we typically use that for any facility improvements. That's about a one and a half cent on a property tax for the special building. Overall tax levy history at Papillion La Vista Schools, you can kind of see in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we were about a dollar thirty. We really pleased with Governor Pillin and twenty-three, twenty-four and the legislature for bringing in special education money. Health offsets some of those costs from the state level, we were able to lower our levy about almost twelve cents that year. And then it's kind of gradually continued to go down even with the loss of state aid. So this year, we're proposing a dollar nine six six overall tax levy. Budget specific, specific information is follows, general fund will see a two point six percent increase. Our bond fund will be a minus four point eight percent decrease, and our special building fund is a one percent increase. Based on the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of Papillion La Vista Community Schools will increase by two percent overall. For questions, here's my contact information, feel free to give me a call or email me, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, last, we have our Sarpy County Commissioner, David Clug.
Good evening, everybody, my name is David Clug, I'm the Chairman of Sarpy County Board of Commissioners. Jonathan, thank Bell University for hosting us this evening, and honestly, thank each and every one of you for coming out to be here this evening. Do want to listen to what you have to say and very interested in your input. So, Sarpy County, the amount of property tax requests in Sarpy County is eighty-four million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The total assessed value of property differs from last year's total assessed value by seven point one percent. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property taxes last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property would be zero point two six six zero three five per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Sarpy County proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause it, the tax rate to be zero point two eight four nine six zero per one hundred dollars of assessed value. And based on that proposed property tax request, the changes in the overall revenue or the other and other revenue, the total operating budget for Sarpy County will exceed last year's by ten point six percent. And to obtain more information regarding the increase in property tax requests, citizens may contact Sarpy County at four oh two five nine three twenty-one sixty-three or LB six forty-four at sarpy.gov, or you can certainly reach out to myself or any of the other commissioners as well. The annual county tax levy per cent for one hundred dollars of valuation, we did lower the levy several years ago to the lowest expense since nineteen eighty-five. We've maintained that levy and we're planning to maintain that for the next fiscal budget year. When we look at the way that the property taxes distributed, for every dollar in property tax that that is rendered, basically the county takes thirteen percent of it, so thirteen cents of every dollar of property taxes goes to the county. And while nobody is excited about property taxes, I think much like everything else in life, it's a value proposition. And when we look at that, that thirteen cents per dollar, Sarpy County does offer nine-one-one emergency services, public works that maintain a lot of the roads throughout the county, our court system, county operations, human and veteran services, the sheriff's office, our correctional facility, and juvenile justice center, as well as GIS and other technological services to ourselves, as well as other governmental bodies within the county. When we look this, and Merrick Dick touched on it a little bit ago, as far as property tax problem in itself, one of the areas that we are working very hard on is there is an unfunded mandate that the state passes down to the county. So every year, we're paying, we're having to spend about two, twelve point seven million dollars in funded mandates. The state says, county, you must do this. And that's something that we're working with our state senators very diligently on, trying to gain traction, so that we, they will remove those unfunded mandates and thus we could lower the tax levy accordingly. In addition to that, with the value proposition, the challenges that we're facing, as the county is growing, we are geographically the smallest county in the state, but we're also the fastest growing county in the state. With that, we're trying to keep up on infrastructure and get the roads that people want and need and deserve for best in the timely commutes. But in addition to that, when we look at our overall budget, we realize that FTEs are a big part of that. And from the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, we are down five FTEs. And I can tell you that that is very intentional, we are looking at what we're doing in-house, trying to find efficiencies and trying to save tax dollars where we can, or shift them from one place to where they need to be to better serve our constituents. If you have any questions, again, please do feel free to contact us if the number and email on there. Or again, please reach out to myself or the other commissioners, should you have any questions, concerns, or just want to talk to us about the budget or other things that are going on in the county. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Okay, this concludes our first half of tonight's Bretonna Public Hearing. We'll take a ten-minute intermission, sorry, my voice. We'll take a ten-minute intermission and start this meeting for public comments. And I just want to remind you to make sure you sign in for public comments, we want to make sure we don't miss anybody. Thank you.
We're gonna call five people up at a time. And you can shake each other right with the young lady and the black and the green. When your name is called, if there's somebody that can't stand, raise your hand and we'll bring the microphone to you so you don't have to worry about standing.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us all a chance to at least ask questions. Trying to find out why things are as they are continuing to increase. I'm hoping that some of these taxes will go to make improvements and repairs. Make safer neighborhoods. Um, this is a problem in my area. I live two, five, three, three Calhoun, corner of modification in Calhoun. Speed limit posted twenty-five miles an hour. People there sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour, and I am not exaggerating. Motorcycles don't stop at the stop sign. Apparently anybody stops at the stop sign. Out of a hundred, maybe five. I want to know what the city can do. For those not, and I know I'm not the only one that has complained. I've been to the police station, spoke with officers. And we've had neighbors, the last meeting, uh, earlier. Uh, downtown and they voiced their opinion, the same thing. We have a very, very negligent system. Not making it safe. I am fearful for the children. In our neighborhood, they walk the streets on their bikes. Ladies pushing baby carriages, people walking their dogs. It is a dangerous neighborhood. What can we do to help? And make it a safe area. All this money goes to school, goes for infrastructure, goes for buildings. What can we do to make a safe neighborhood? Speed bumps, you have speed bumps in Northwest Omaha, you have speed boxes in Papillion Center. Two right there on the main drag with a couple hundred feet of each other. What can we do for Bellevue to make it a safe place?
I'm Paul Reynolds. I'm in La Vista. Uh, commend City Bellevue and Bellevue Public Schools for keeping their budget from increasing. Significantly above, uh. Inflation rate. Uh. City of La Vista. Papillion La Vista Schools, Sarpy County. Uh, damn you with, uh, faint praise. Uh, you were not understandable and your increase was significant. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me, I've had a cough for a month, so I've got a cough drop. I'm sorry. Uh, my name is, uh, Kate Carlson. Uh, to cry or swear, I don't know which, but I thought of last night's meeting that we had in Omaha. Um, but had me up at two, two thirty in the morning to write this. So here I am. Nebraska has always been the worst for high taxes, all taxes. We are overtaxed to death. The days of living on one income, raising seven kids like my parents did is over. My husband and I just retired last year with hopes and dreams. Of traveling internationally like we have done before, possibly even living abroad. Click back and enjoy our golden years before they slip away. Dreamed of that for years. As it turned out. We became medical consumers, which took us to Australia. Because doctors in the U.S. want to keep us sick, unhealthy and broke. My cousin also flew to Thailand. Flight, hotel, surgery, and recovered on a beach for three weeks. And still paid less, uh, than he would have had he done it here in the States out of his own pocket. I have lived in New York, Minnesota, Colorado, Kansas, South Dakota and Nebraska. I lived in Germany for nearly seven years. I have traveled all over Europe, Australia and many other states. I know many places are doing better for their citizens. Why can't we? Nebraska's a good life. It's a good slogan on the billboard, but I'm not buying it. We are nearly top in the nation for property taxes. Nebraska has always been high on taxes. Taxation without representation, I'd say. In Minnesota, after six months and a day, home state tax, your taxes start going down. This big ugly bill and home tariffs the president has shoved down our throats. And his administration steps right in line with them. Future generations will be depending on that for young couples and single individuals can't afford to live. I could go on, but you get my drift.
Good evening. I'm David Lydic. I live at twenty-five, twenty-five Calhoun in Bellevue. I want to say right up front, I say to the mayor of La Vista, amen. And here ye hear ye about, we have a tax problem in Nebraska. It is big and it's not just a problem for the state in general, it's a problem for me. Uh, my family wife and I are retired, live on a fixed income. And, uh, we live in Old Town Bellevue. We're not in Regency or some gated high, highfalutin community. And my tax now on my property is over fifty-five hundred dollars a year. That's a, a raise in the last two years, by the way, of almost five hundred dollars per year. Uh, I live on a fixed income. I'd like to have the capability that you all have to just make some budgetary decision. And then it comes down to us. Like it or lump it, we have to pay it. And at some point. I'm telling you, you're gonna confiscate my property, I'm gonna be in the street. I can't, I can't keep up. And so, um. I don't know what the answer is, but there is some answer. My daughter and son-in-law and their family. He retired from military here and gave serious consideration staying here, but it was a no-brainer, he said. So they retired in Alabama. Uh, brainwash my grandchildren who now are pulling for Alabama. Um. But they pay something like, I think it's four hundred and some dollars a year for their property tenant. So it can be done somehow. And so we've got to give some serious consideration to it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Want to be a little closer here. Good evening. My name is Ralph Tate. I live in Papillion. Um, we have lived here for twenty-two years. I haven't had kids in school, uh, through high school for eighteen years. I've been a proud owner, as in no mortgage on my house for sixteen years. And yet the state continues to allow me to lease it for the last sixteen years. So, thank you very much. So first of all, I want to commend Mr. Richards. You win the award tonight for Papillion asking for the largest amount of money with this levy. So thank you. Actually, that's not really true. As, as into recognition, but I think the gentleman from Sarpy County had the concept right of a value proposition. What is it we get for what we pay? Because what we pay obviously is being driven by, other than our interest, personal interests. But I would s- suggest particularly when it comes to schools. It's not only the cost, but it's the end result that we are looking for. So looking through the Department of Education data, I find that in Papillion. For the senior class of twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, actually the eleventh graders, when they took the ACT test. Only fifty-six percent were proficient at grade level for English and math. Science, fifty-nine percent. So I'm curious what the value proposition is, because the focus is not that we have world-class buildings. Quite frankly, I don't care about the building. I'm more looking for world-class education. When you've got thirty-four percent of our students graduating, and oh, by the way, the graduation rate. During this period of time was ninety-six point five percent. Now someone from the school district perhaps can explain to me how we square the circle. When you've got thirty-four percent not proficient and yet ninety-six percent graduate. I'm a little bit at a loss there. And finally, when it costs us fourteen thousand dollars to send a child to public school. But it only costs us ten thousand dollars to send it to the university at Lincoln. I think there's a disconnect. So thank you very much.
Stephen Bach, Brian Hanson, Julie Duran, Stephen Dodds, Ronald Ensley.
How you guys doing? My name, my name's Stephen Bach. Um, didn't have a lot of time to prepare for it. I'm a small business owner, Sarpy County. Uh, do a lot of work around the general area. Um, I own property in kind of a rural Sarpy County area. Um, technically we're Papillion. Um, kind of on the fault line between Springfield and, and Papillion around Capeport Road. Um. So it, we're kind of, feel like we're kind of in, and I'm probably. Beating a dead horse here, but we're kind of in a cycle of doing the same thing, expecting different results. And I think, I, I see the, uh, a lot of issues with. Namely finding the money without other sources of revenue. Um. And I think a lot of it can be answered. Um, some of my neighbors. I think we might know them. Meta, Facebook, Google, Traveler's Data Center. These are billion-dollar companies. And I feel like we may have made a bad deal with that. Because they get a pretty good deal on their valuations. And it's a trickle-down effect to us, the working class. I'm still wearing my dirty boots. Um, they probably laugh when they write the check to you guys. Um, and I just think that it was a grave mistake. Uh, it's great for the community. I mean, it provided jobs and all that good stuff, but. Just like a hundred people that work in those places. It's, there's, there's nothing going on there. Um. And I, I just think, I mean, we'll figure it out. But I think it just, um. We missed the boat with giving them such a good deal. Um, and it's a lot of money we left on the table. So, but it is what it is. I mean, we'll work through it. So, thank you, guys.
Good evening. My name is Julie Duran and I live in Papillion with my husband and four young kids. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I'm here tonight to share my concerns about the property tax int- increase. Uh, we just moved from, we sold a home for seventy-five thousand dollars and it was taxed at two thousand, two hundred dollars a year. That same home here easily have cost twelve thousand dollars in income tax, and that's before this proposed increase. Uh, here in Nebraska, your taxes are outrageous. Mind-blowing. You are the fourth highest state per property tax in the nation. And proposing to increase them even further. We just purchased our home this year and already the assessed value of our home. Has gone up by ten percent as well as this proposed tax increase, which would also add about ten percent. I urge you to take another look at the budget and find ways to reduce spending rather than increase the tax burden on residents. I believe there's other solutions that don't fall so heavily on taxpayers. Other states are getting it done and let's follow them. Thank you.
Uh, Stephen Dodds, Bellevue. Uh, I think, uh, we're talking about, uh, two separate issues here. Uh, one is, if I'm understanding the math right, the increase is due to the. Mostly due to the property values themselves increasing, but the assessor isn't here on the stage to answer for what they calculated. Which is kind of insane. I think you guys have tried your best to maybe lower a point. Oh, one percent or something, uh, but the real issue is the, the assessor is essentially speculating on the market. And I don't know if that's at the behest of your conversations in the back alley or if that's them on zero. And then maybe the, uh, they get some sort of kickback for doing that, but, uh, to me, if you were going to. Speculate on the market, uh, on our backs, well then. One thing you could do is vote internally or something. Let us. Sell our house to you for cash. Sell the, sell it back to the county. If you're that confident in these, in these values. Then you should be confident enough to purchase that and give your. and give yourself an incentive to choose a price that you could make a buck off of it for the county. If you want to, like, if not, you're just, there's no incentive on your side, and it's not you, it's the assessor's side, to actually put a value that would make sense for the taxpayer. The only incentive would be that, well then, the county has to take the risk on whatever that value is. And to me, that's the only way. Of course, that's not going to happen, but I would say that, that would be the only equivalent exchange. I actually don't know what we could do to force that price to be real. But the, as the other lady said, other cities do this by arbitrarily locking a price at a certain, for a certain period of time. But that's something maybe you could do, but yeah, the assessor's not here, so, okay.
Hello, my name's Ron Ensley, I'm out of Bellevue. My property valuation went up twenty thousand dollars in one year. Now, that's without any improvements on the property or anything. My wife has called and tried to get the valuation, or to dispute the valuation on the property, and she's told, oh, you can get an assessor to come out and look at your property. Why not have the city or whoever is increasing the valuation, if it's disputed, have them send an assessor out, so we can get an accurate accounting of how much it's actually worth? Now, from what I'm looking at, the budgets have gone up roughly six percent of what I see is what the increase is. Well, my pay, my budget, hasn't gone up six percent. I don't get to go to my employer and say, hey, my taxes went up, I need more money. I don't get to demand that and make them pay it.
Vern Carlson, Gerald Qatar, Matt Johnson, Gunther Festik, Barb Belt.
So, yeah, I'm Vern Carlson, I'm a resident of Papillion. Here to talk about Dillon's Rule in Nebraska and unfunded mandates. Dillon's Rule limits the power of local governments, such as cities, counties, and towns, to those expressly granted by the state legislature. If there's any reasonable doubt about whether the power has been conferred, courts presume it has not been. Cities with a population of at least five thousand may adopt a home rule charter via voter approval. This grants them authority to frame and amend their own charters for local self-government, effectively exempting them from strict Dillon's Rule adherence for matters of purely local concern. Only two cities in Nebraska currently under, operate under full home rule charters, they're Omaha and Lincoln. All other cities remain subject to Dillon's Rule and must seek explicit state legislative grants for power. Super cities like Papillion, Bellevue, Gretna, Alcorn, and Grand Island, North Platte and others who have more than five thousand citizens, should consider converting to home rule. The primary benefits of home rule are things like local autonomy and tailored solutions, reduced state legislative interference, greater local responsibility, efficient and responsive government, adaptability to local conditions, immunity from state preemption of local matters. And the other thing I want to talk about, well, raise your hand if you think unfunded mandates are a problem. And then the other thing, I'm running out of time, but out-of-control property valuations for single-family homes and farmland. One solution could be allowed, allow citizens to bid on homes for three months. If the home does not sell, then allow investors to bid. Homestead exemptions, so that tech, investors are taxed at a higher rate and pay property taxes for the home purchase price.
My name is Gerald Kade, I live in Bellevue, recently annexed into Bellevue. My, my discussion is concerning these property taxes. I mean, my, my property taxes have gone up fifty percent in the past eight years. I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars this year. It's ridiculous. I mean, my property value has gone up that much. With all the expansion of properties in the cities, you're building like crazy, so there should, there's an increase in the number of properties. How can you justify increasing the value of each home? That people have, I mean, we're not getting, like they say, we're not getting an increase from, you know, I'm retired. I'm on a fixed income. I can't, you know, I can't go to the bank and say, oh, you know, I need six percent because the state said, I need more money. You know, I, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, there's, there's some discrepancy here between all these properties that are getting built, and then all the existing properties are still getting their property values increased. So somewhere along the line, somebody's making a bunch of money. Thank you.
Thanks for coming to my performance tonight. And I'd like to thank Mayor Mike, Mayor Kendry, and also David for being up there and taking the fire. And the rest of you guys, I appreciate you. But the school board members, hi to the audience, you need to be up here, because you're constituents, and you need to be taking the fire instead of these guys, all right? Anyway, appreciate you all listening to us tonight. Thank you for having this publicly, this legally required meeting. One thing I want to point out, could we please stop talking about the levy? I see this card, I don't see a levy on you, I see dollars, and they're going up. You're not fooling anybody. So let's just be honest about it. And I appreciate the work you do, I appreciate the budgets you guys have put together. And I understand, no one likes paying taxes, but we've got to find a more fair way to do this. There's nothing on this card that's tied to our ability to pay. It's the problem with property taxes. Now, the thing is, I would love to hear a solution from someone on the stage about what to do about this. I've lived here for thirty years, no one's come up with one. But you know what, a couple guys outside have some petitions, they've got leased a solution. So I signed both the fifty percent off property tax and the hundred percent off. I love each of those solutions, if you've got something better, maybe we can have a petition that locks in your property valuation to the amount you paid for it. Then you'll know how much you're paying. And then if you want to raise taxes by raising the levy, it'll mean something. So anyway, I'm passionate about this, because my income hasn't gone up in a while, but you know what has? My property taxes. And a lot of us are irritated about it, that's why we're here. I wish more people were here, but I think they don't think that it matters. We think this is a performance. And that, as much as you guys, I appreciate you guys listening, I know some of you do. Some other people don't though, because your budget's already done. And it doesn't matter what we say, because it's already locked in along with our taxes. I appreciate it though. Everybody sign, or the other one, whichever matters. Thank you.
Ginter Feist, T22400, West Angus, Gretna, Nebraska. I cannot as passionately or simply state what has already been stated. Everybody's basically said the same thing, I'm going to say, fixed income. I keep putting money aside every year, it's never enough, you guys keep asking more and more. I appreciate your budgets, you guys got expenses, but you've got to consider, so do we. We need to figure out a way to keep us living here in Nebraska where I grew up and want to stay, or forcing us to leave because we can't afford to live here anymore. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, you've got a hundred jobs, but we need to consider everybody. You got budgets, we've got budgets. We have to live within our means. Please do the same. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barb Belt from Bellevue. I got to talk fast, because our time was reduced from three minutes down to two minutes. So, two years ago, we got a pink slip just like this, and I predicted that it would be voted in by the city council, and it was, and I predict the same thing this time. This pink slip, for anybody who doesn't know, represents a more than the allowable growth percentage increase for our taxes, or a double-digit increase. That means we're being taxed outside the law, the bounds of the law. And they get around this by having this public hearing. I'm wondering if there's really anybody that agrees with this tax increase here? And I'm wondering if there's really anybody who has a double increase, a double-digit increase in their pay raise every year? No, I didn't think so. So, if, so, yeah, so, so it's unsustainable what's happening, and we're not being represented by our elected officials. So one way around this is Epic Option, or the other, other options that are being proposed. And I would sincerely ask that everyone signs that. It seeks to eliminate property taxes, income taxes, and inheritance taxes.
Edis Steele, Ken Iverson, and Jaclyn Stone.
Steel, I've lived in Sarpy County for over thirty years, and it's not a fun place to live. Our taxes completely are out of hand statewide. Like the woman lady said, we're number four in the nation. It's just pathetic. It's really pathetic. I want to retire, and I want to retire soon. And I'm going to give you an example. I've got a house in Springfield, Nebraska. Average home. Over six thousand dollars a year. And the insurance just went up to six thousand dollars a year. I could pay it off and still have to pay twelve hundred a month. And pull it off. I've also got a home at the Lake of the Ozarks in Missouri. Comparable home to the one I have here. Anybody want to guess what my taxes are there? They're eleven hundred a year. And the insurance is a little or nothing. Who do we blame this on? How can I retire in Nebraska? I would love to retire in Nebraska. I've got kids in Nebraska. I can't afford to live in Nebraska anymore. You've heard all these people, they're angry, that you guys set up there with your stone faces. It's really pathetic. I didn't want to get up here and get angry, but everybody else is angry too. And you guys really ought to take a hard look in the mirror. You really ought to take a hard look at your budget. Stop spending crap at screw on this DEI transgender crap. Can we stop all that crap? Anybody in favor? It's time to end shit.
I'm Ken Iverson from Papillion. But anyway, first off, I want to, the person from the county, I know you said you could, person could call, but I called today and all I get is the answering system. So with the money being spent on personnel, I think maybe we could get someone to answer the phone and answer some questions. But, my, my question was going to be, according to the pink slip, this meeting is required because you're going, all of you are going over the allowable extra percentage. And I wanted to know what that extra percentage was, but I couldn't get no answer from someone. But, and you mentioned you have budget meetings for the city and this and that, and that's fine. But the rest of you, I don't understand, if you have budgets, why can't we stay within that budget? This meeting is because you want to go over that budget, even by an amount over what the state allows. And I don't understand why we can't stay within our budgets. And if, if it's a money problem, figure out some efficiencies to stay within the budget, and so we don't have this problem each and every year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Stone, I live in Papillion. We have lived in Papillion now for five years. Prior to that, my husband did live here about fifteen years, but we had moved to Westo for a while. My property taxes have gone up every single year, and it's because you guys keep raising the property valuation. We've had a twenty-five percent increase in our property valuation. I don't think that's sustainable to keep doing. And it doesn't make sense, even when you look at what market values are on homes. So something needs to be done to be looking at who your property assessors are, and how they're coming up with their valuations. We're to seven percent increase this year alone. So that's not something you guys should be doing. When I look at your numbers and you guys talk about how much your increases are, and how much property valuation you have in total, it's really interesting, it's also seven percent. So there's a lot of new construction going on, particularly in the Papillion area. I'd like to see you guys actually have to disclose how much of your property valuation increase year over year is from raising property valuation numbers versus how much of it is from new construction that obviously is going to have an increase. So when you're turning farmland into new housing development, you're obviously going to have a natural increase. That should be offsetting any increase in your budget, not actually causing me to raise property evaluations across everything that already exists in there. So, I really think you guys should be disclosing and looking at that closer. I spent my career actually doing process improvement and efficiencies in companies. Public companies do not get to just completely raise their budgets year over year. We actually spent our time looking at where we could do cost efficiencies and cuts. And I think you guys need to look at it, there's ways to do cuts that don't impact the quality of education in the school, or where you can do cuts. I think we need to start seriously looking and bring somebody in. If you don't have somebody already on your staff, you should be having somebody that's looking at where you can get more efficiencies, so you can start saving money to your taxpayers, instead of continuing the increase. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to come up for public comments? Or does someone want to raise their hand, we can bring the microphone to you?
I appreciate this meeting, this is the first time I've been here. My name's Glenn Ford, I was military back in nineteen ninety-one and first came here. I retired here and felt this was a good place to raise my kids, and it proved to be so. But everybody here speaking tonight is right. You are pricing us out of staying here. A lot of military people have a lot of hard thoughts about staying here. There are better places that are cheaper, but this place felt like home. And this is starting to turn around. Now, the schools, they're right. The young lady that was just speaking, everything needs to be on the table. But the one thing that is missing from this meeting that should have been here, as some of the people have already said, was the assessor. We need a whole approach. You guys are just half the equation. The guy who should have been here, you guys should maybe be here. And that's the part I just don't understand. We should have had an assessor here. Every time my house value goes up, he should be able to give me some sort of detailed breakdown as to what is going up, what caused this, some sort of itemization of why my house property continues to go up, when all I did was plant grass seeds. I, I would hope that the next meeting that comes out, that you guys will ask the assessor to be here to answer questions as well.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Petajic, I live on two six one five Rose Lane Road in Bellevue. Um, never lived in Bellevue before, I've just lived here the last thirteen years. Every single year, our property values have gone up. This year, my house value went up ten thousand dollars. How? I, I really want to know how, I didn't see no one come to the door and say, oh, well, this looks different, that looks different, this is better. Nothing's changed. Why is my value ten thousand dollars higher than it was last year? And the year before that, it went up another ten thousand. I don't get it, we're on incomes. We don't have extra money to pull out of the air and pay these. And if we're not making improvements, we're keeping our house clean, we're keeping it uh, viable, we're mowing lawns, but we're not doing anything extra, why are we being charged this? And where do you think we're supposed to come up with the money for this stuff? I mean, you guys have an increase every year, I understand that, you have police, you have fire, storms come up, I get that. But at some point, you're gonna break all of our backs trying to cover the cost of everything you're doing. Where is our break? Thank you.
Uh, Lauren Carlson, I want to answer everybody's questions about why their, uh, property values are going up. That's because we have out-of-state investors and, and even out-of-the-country investors buying up single-family homes. They, they do cash offers and they offer sometimes twenty, fifty thousand dollars over asking, and then they flip the houses or turn them into rentals. I had a brief discussion with the Sarpy County Commissioner, he said that fifty percent of the properties in a, I think it was La Vista, were rentals, that was shocking to me. Um, so it also makes us, uh, high risk in, uh, this market as far as home valuations, because, because of all this, uh, investor pressure, I don't know about anybody else, but I constantly get ads that are for people that want to buy my house, I actually have two houses, I have a rental and a house that I live in. And constantly people want to buy my house. I don't know who these people are. I tried to call one of them yesterday and just to figure out, is this a large investor or a small investor? I know that in North Omaha, I believe there's one large investor that owns a hundred homes. I should not pay the same property taxes that that large investor that owns a hundred homes does. There should be a difference in what we pay. Same thing for farmland, we've got Bill Gates and others buying up farmland at fire sale prices, and now that the, the federal government is gonna clash our farmers, farms are gonna come up as, at wholesale, uh, fire sale prices, and men will be killed up. I don't like the idea of corporate farms and monopolies farming Nebraska farmlands.
Hi, my name is, name's Gerald Vinduska. Uh, lived in Sarpy County about thirty-five years, got a farm down by Schramm State Park. I hear a lot of testifiers tonight talk about, you know, where's all this money going from, for the growth, from the growth? And I'd, I'd say, my whole life, I'm, like I'm seventy-four years old, I've been here, and we gotta broaden the tax base by bringing more growth here. But I say it's just the opposite, the growth is what's causing the taxes to go higher. Uh, farmland isn't costing the county or the cities in Sarpy County much money. It's, it's the growth, and not just the growth, but the, but the giveaways, the, the tax increment financing, uh, and the things that, that government shouldn't be involved in, like building sewer lines to, to bring more growth, or ballparks, or, or, uh, water parks, and all these things that sound good to the voters, and they, and a lot of, lots of times, they vote them in, but the growth causes need more infrastructure that's needed, and that's what's causing the taxes to go up. Uh, I know that might be a different opinion than a lot of people, but it's what I've observed, so I had to put my two cents worth in.
Hi, my name is Elise Stangle, and I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing, and I understand that budget increases, my budget also has increased in the last year. Um, my thing is, um, state statute seventy-seven dash sixteen thirty-one explains what the allowable growth is, and the allowable growth is, so say, no taxes, not, the tax request wasn't increased, but we have two percent growth and also the real growth percentage, which is like new construction and all of that, so that that, if, if you just raised the, the request by two percent plus real growth, you wouldn't have to have this meeting. So you went over that, that's just clarification, and I understand if you need to go over that. Another thing is, is people are blaming the assessor, and the assessor can cause the value of the house to go up, but that's just, you just take the percentage of that, so you could lower the levy, so you got, this is simple numbers, but say you got a hundred dollars last year, the valuation of the house goes up, thus your, your tax request goes up automatically, you could lower your levy to keep it at a hundred dollars, so it's not the assessor's fault. Now, if we need to work on the assessor and how they value thing, that, that's another thing, but this, you know, you could lower the levy to keep the numbers the same. And then as far as, I don't know if you've set your budgets or not, um, if you have the state auditor's, auditor's office, I said that you can bring an amendment before October fifteenth, that there's that option, and if you haven't set the budget yet, then you have twenty days without another hearing, you can change the budget, as long as you publish the reasons for the changes to lower or increase those numbers, but anyway, I appreciate what you're doing, and also appreciate everyone here, you know, the things that they're saying too, um, just brought some clarification.
Hello, my name is Lauren Eby, and I'm in Papillion, um. I appreciate what you guys are doing in terms of looking at the, the revenue, but you're talking about the general fund as a whole. I wanted to make you guys aware that Springfield, Bellevue is the only school district in Sarpy County that is not here, okay? Um, I also want to make you aware that our school districts in Sarpy County are not accounting for all the revenue that is owed to them, whether they're just not accounting for it and pocketing the money or whatever. I have asked Andrew Wookley, who's the superintendent as well, and all of the school board members, why they are not accounting for the revenue count one one four zero, which is penalties, and he's led by the school district, and I have been ignored. I think it's really interesting that everyone here is saying, here's our contact information, just call us and we'll give you a call back. When people ask questions via email, radio silence, and the Papillion administration and school boards are the worst culprits. I also want to remind everybody that there is the five percent in lieu of lawsuits that all of the metro area school districts have been involved in. This was an amendment in our constitution in nineteen fifty-nine, and the calculations have been wrong, this this is due to incompetence of the school districts. I have all the information on my, my YouTube channel, which is Lauren A M E B Y, if you want to learn more about the corruption and incompetence of the Papillion La Vista school districts, and I, I, my website or my email is there if you have any questions, and, and if you ask me questions, I promise I will return your inquiry. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna speak again, uh, because I didn't get a little bit out that I still wanted to. Um, last night when we were at that meeting, there were a couple widows that were crying at the podium. They lost their husbands, and they were worrying whether they're gonna be able to keep their, in their homes, uh, because now they've lost their husband's income. Uh, I did a search and it said, here in, uh, in Bellevue, there is about twenty-five percent of the population that don't even make, uh, forty thousand dollars or less. And in Omaha, it's about thirty percent that make that. This is not sustainable to keep increasing these taxes. My grandma was born in nineteen hundred, and she lived the last thirty years of her life, little over thirty years of her life, without my grandfather, she lived on social security, and I guess I keep thinking about those women that were crying last night, and I'm hoping when something happens to my husband or I, that neither one of us are gonna have to worry whether we're gonna be able to stay in our homes. It's not there, it's not sustainable, and just like last night, as someone else mentioned, you guys are sitting here with a stone-cold face like, oh, I didn't know there was a problem. Well, there's a problem, we've all got a problem with this. Thank you.
Me, Larry Harden, twenty-two oh eight, Woody Drive, Bellevue. Um, I've been coming to these meetings almost every year because they're always going over what the state allowed. Anyway, uh, I bought my property in, uh, two thousand and six for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. My evaluation now is two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So it's going, the property keeps going up, and now I call the county assessor and they say that's because now the houses in my area sell for about that amount. Well, you know, I can't help that, but my property's not worth that much money. And it's been going up like eighteen thousand dollars a year for the last few years. I'm not real happy with that, and the meetings I've been coming to, uh, it's they're, they're kind of useless, that's my opinion, because nothing changes. And that's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
My name is Connie, again, I live in, staying on the burning redwood edge. Sixteen years ago, we purchased our house for two hundred and five thousand. The current valuation for taxes is at three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and we've learned very little to it. We've been retired for twenty-seven years, my husband's eighty-nine, I'm eighty-five. I can't get a part-time job, I can't afford to fix the things in my house that need fixing, but yet my taxes keep going up, 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 as well as the electric bill, the water bill, the heat bill, the grocery bill, everything goes up. My income, however, does not. My retirement check has gone down. I was promised a certain amount of retirement for a local company, I won't mention their name, but I don't get anywhere near that, we were told that we had a good retirement, they lied. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Bellevue University for allowing us to utilize this facility, Sarpy County and Bellevue University Technology, support staff, Sarpy County Sheriff deputies, our Bellevue Police Department, our clerk and administration team for putting this hearing together. I'd also like to thank our presenters and our audience for coming to the joint public hearing. With no further comments from our audience, the time is now eight thirteen, and I formally declare this joint public hearing is now closed. Thank you.